Peoria City Council Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for a moment of quiet reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Patena.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Carlet.
Here.
Vice Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Binzbacher.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
And Councilmember Dunn.
Here.
Good evening and welcome to the Peoria City Council's special meeting of March 31st, Last year, right about this time, the COVID-19 pandemic shook our world. There was continued hope that we would be through it before the new year, but that was not the case. Its lasting effects are still around and still give us cause to be vigilant about protecting our health and the health of those around us. In spite of all that the pandemic doled out, as we approach a new budget year, I am proud to report that we do so as a fiscally sound city. Creating a balanced budget is one of the most important responsibilities of city government. Council and I began an ongoing series of work-study sessions late last year to allow us the time that it takes to assess the financial implications and details now contained in the proposed budget that is before us tonight. We remain focused on adhering to the principles of sound financial management, maintaining low taxes, and assuring that this budget reflects our city's steadfast commitment to providing exceptional core services that meet the priorities of our citizens. I want to thank our city manager, Mr. Jeff Tyne, and his incredible staff for the hard work that it takes to create a budget that meets the current and future needs of a growing city while ensuring that every tax dollar is put to work for the benefit of those who call Peoria home. Now, to begin our fiscal year 2022 budget presentation, I will turn it over to our city manager, Mr. Jeff Tyne.
Appreciate that, and thank you, Mayor, for the comments. I wanted to start with a thank you to our staff for all of the effort that you have put in over the last year to work through the financial situation that we were in and as we started to speculate that working through a process that really addressed the essential services. So, thank you to all of you, and thank you to our council, who has put in just an extensive amount of work already in the budget process, and I think we all very much appreciate that. And it culminates here with important study sessions here where we will be providing you an overview on all of the major operating budgets and then ultimately the capital budget. Of course, we have these very large, very pretty but large documents that you all have been going through as well, which provide information, both financial and economic information, performance measures and outcomes and expectations, as well as the resources that are put forward. For purposes of the audience, let me go through a little bit of the process that we've had to date, and I'll see if I'm able to get this to go. So, the process that we put forward so far is very similar to what we had seen in previous times, and of course, this started with briefings to the city council as early as summer of 2020, where we were able to provide more of an economic update of conditions at that time, and then, of course, subsequent to that, one-on-one discussions to make sure that you were very well apprised of circumstances. We also spent time to allow for a deeper dive and to go into some of the major functions that we have as a city with the larger departments, neighborhood and human services, our fire and medical and police services, water, parks and rec and public works, of course, in our last meeting. But the budget sessions we have this week are important. They essentially roll up the budget and allow you all to review this as a whole, and so it allows for us to explore a little bit more of the dynamics that happen, and you develop an entire budget, and to talk about some of the trade-offs that we have to make a decision on. To do so, we have the able assistance of our deputy city managers, who will be walking us through and providing an overview of the functions within the departments that they helped oversee, and really, we have, as an emcee, our budget staff as well, Peter Christensen, our budget manager, Barry Haug, our deputy director of finance and budget, that will be assisting us, and Adina Lund, our engineering director, who will be prepared this week also to speak to our robust capital improvement program. So, thank you to that. A couple of thoughts that I just wanted to go through before I pass it over to Peter. This is your budget, city council. I think the mayor put it perfectly. This is a defining document for you all. The budget that we are putting forward to, of course, is a recommendation based off of a lot of discussions with you, so we really do hope that we have reflected your highest priorities. But that said, we welcome your thoughts, your observations and considerations as we go through this and as you have dissected this specific book. The other is that this budget follows through with, I think, the principles that the mayor had mentioned, and that really comes out in these five different pieces, in our view. One of those is the comment that we just heard about a balanced budget. That is much more complex than it seems. It's not just a matter of identifying a specific revenue to a specific cost or expense that's identified. It's really a balance between our long-term financial sustainability and the importance of putting taxpayer dollars into play. So, what you see is us putting that money into play in a way that ensures our long-term solvency, and that's where it gets to be tricky to have a balanced budget, but we believe we have put that forward to you. Next is a commitment to essential services. There's so much that we want to do, and especially that was seen in the last year, as we did have to pivot to address different and changing circumstances on the ground. But the reality is, I don't think we ever lose sight of what are the core services that we provide as a city, and you heard a lot of that in the deeper dive conversations that we had had. It also is important that we recognize how we support the council priorities. We are very fortunate in that we have what are termed livability initiatives that the city council put forward to us. These are not abstractions. They're easy for us to identify with all of the functions that we do as a city, to help ensure that our residents have access to arts, culture and various recreational amenities, and to be enriched by that, to have the efforts to put forward an economically prosperous Peoria, healthy neighborhoods, integrating our transportation, being smart about our growth, and ensuring that we provide the superior public safety and broader services. These are things that we can live, and they make sense to our residents, we believe, as well. So, this helps us a lot as we put this budget together, and you'll be hearing this infused in the presentations by your deputy city managers going forward. Talk a little bit about a couple of other principles that we don't give enough credit to, and that is the commitment of this city council to work within our means. An example of that is, again, you will see in this budget, yet again, no increases to our tax rates, to our sales tax, to our property tax rates, and incremental utility rate adjustments is what we're putting forward, and that has served us very well. We thought we'd put a little bit of perspective on that, and we can, this doesn't tell the whole story, but it is interesting nonetheless. When we look at Peoria and we look at our utility rates, this is a combination of our solid waste, water and wastewater on an average household, you can see that we are extremely competitive in that area. When you look at us specifically in our retail sales tax, which is a major source of revenue for us, you can see that we are the lowest in the West Valley, and we remain overall very low as well. When we look at the property tax, you can see it's actually in tiers, and we continue to be at a low tier, and not only that, probably more importantly, we have had no property tax increase since at least 2005, and that is a testament to the commitment that the city council has had of working within our means. When we look at that all together, you can see that annual tax and fee burden for our average household remains incredibly competitive while providing amazing services, of which we will be, of course, bragging about tonight. So, wanted to give a little bit of perspective about the importance that it has and why we believe that we're following all of those different principles as we put this forward. I think that is pretty much all of my prepared comments. Let me just go through real quickly what the agenda will look like. So, in a second, I will be passing this over to Mr. Christensen to provide an important budget overview. It'll be a lot of what you've heard, but it is so important that we summarize that information because it is the foundation for a lot of the conversations later tonight. From there, we will have program summaries that will be provided effectively, as usual, by our deputy city managers. They have helped and worked so closely with our department directors and managers and supervisors to put this forward, and so I will be proud for what they put forward for you. And then, again, we will potentially tonight have the ability to go through the capital improvement program, which is very important to us. So much of what we see in investments in the community really come out from that, and that will be really a combination of having some financial background provided by the budget staff and then the presentation, we anticipate, by our engineering director, Adina Lund. And from there, of course, we do plan to wrap up, but again, at any point in time as we go through these conversations, we do urge you to interrupt, let us know if you have any comments, observations, questions. We are happy to go through that. With that, if I may, I will pass it to Mr. Christensen, if I may.
Yes.
I'm literally going to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne. Good evening, Mayor and council. I am pleased to be here to provide a short overview of the financial aspect of this year's budget. It has been a wild ride in the budget office, to say the least, but I am happy to report we have a much clearer financial picture today than we did a year or so ago at this time, and most of the news that we'll be sharing with you tonight is optimistic, so I think it'll be a good time tonight. As always, the mayor alluded to our principles of sound financial management. This is the basis of any budget that we begin and helps guide all the financial decisions that we make. Wanted to just hit on a few of the principles that are most germane to us in the budget process. So, the first one is that as we look at our ongoing operations, we are very careful to only use or to not use one-time revenues or debt to finance, to fund those operations. That's a common principle in the budgeting world and one we've adhered to for a long time, and is certainly true of the FY22 budget. We also look at five-year forecasts for all of our major funds, and those major funds include the general fund, our half-cent sales tax fund, our transportation funds, and our water, wastewater and solid waste enterprise funds. And that's important in that we would probably make very different decisions if we were only looking at that first year as opposed to that five-year out in time, and I'll illustrate that here in a minute. Likewise, we have a financially balanced capital program, and that just means that we have identified and reliable funding sources for all the projects that are included in the 10-year plan that Ms. Lund will be talking about later tonight. You're aware that we have had for a long time strong financial reserve policies. We continue to maintain those reserves, and that provides flexibility and a short-term cushion when we have revenue shocks like we had last year or any kind of natural disaster or other emergency that could arise. And then finally, we use bonds and other forms of debt in a responsible way that helps preserve our strong bond ratings and minimizes the financial impact to our taxpayers. This is a chart I know you've seen a lot over the last year. It looks a lot better now than it did a year ago or six months ago. This shows the ongoing forecast for the general fund. So, if you look at the blue bar on the left, that represents our ongoing general fund expenditures, those are increasing over this forecast period by about 3% to 3.5% per year. That's driven almost entirely by employee compensation. That's the biggest factor in that. The gold bar on the right represents our ongoing revenues, and the revenue story for the last year has been quite an interesting one. The FY21 budget was based on revenue estimates overall for the general fund being 5% less than the year before it, FY19, and 15% less for our city sales tax. However, that script has flipped entirely during the course of the year. Fortunately, we are conservatively projecting that our overall general fund revenues will actually be up by about 3%, and that our sales tax revenues will be up 5% overall. We do have actually double-digit growth in some categories of sales tax, like our retail and our construction contracting categories. The reason that the gap between the revenues and the expenditures narrows in those last two years is because that is when we bring in the operating impacts of Fire Station Number Eight and Paloma Community Park Number Two, and again, that's why it's important for us to do those five-year forecasts. If we were only looking at FY22, we would think we had a lot more money to work with, but because we include those things in our outlook, we make better decisions. So, while the general fund is healthy, we do, it's important to recognize that we do have some fiscal pressures that are very real, so I'll go through a few of these. First and foremost, as we strive to be an employer of choice and remain competitive for top talent here in the valley, that definitely comes with a cost. It costs about $3 to $3.5 million year-over-year to the general fund to give those merit and COLA increases in our MOUs and also to our nonrepresented employees. Similarly, their healthcare cost inflation has been an issue for employers for a lot of years and continues to be so. We're seeing a 7% increase there for FY22. Like most, almost all Arizona cities, we have a large unfunded liability in our public safety retirement programs. Just to give you an idea, for FY22, our required contribution just for that portion, the unfunded portion, is $8.4 million. That's 5% of our overall general fund operating budget, so it's not an insignificant amount. We do have some options for addressing that that we'll be bringing back to council in coming study sessions. We do have a robust capital plan, like we'll be talking about tonight, and that's great, but it does bring with it costs to operate those facilities as we bring them online, so that is always putting pressure on our ongoing forecasts. And then finally, growth by its very nature puts pressure on our existing resources as we strive to do the plan review and permitting of those projects as they come in, and then to maintain service levels across the city over time. Also, as they add infrastructure to the city, that obviously we need to account for the cost of maintaining those assets over time. So, those fiscal pressures are real, but they're also manageable, and we have accounted for them fully in the FY22 budget and in our forecast going forward, and feel good about our plan for addressing those. So, the budget that we are proposing to you tonight is a total of $695 million. That's a 4.5% increase over last year. The largest portion of the budget, as always, is the operating budget, which is $329 million and represents 47% of the total. The capital budget is the other large portion of this. It's $242 million for FY22 and represents 35% of the total. The debt service and contingency appropriation round out the total budget, and just as a reminder, our contingency appropriation, which is $79 million for FY22, is not set aside for any particular purpose, but it's there to allow us the flexibility to use our reserves if we needed to. This slide just shows the revenue composition of the general fund. We know you've seen this many times in the past. The key takeaway here is that between our city sales tax and our state shared sales tax and income taxes, that makes up 60, about 2/3 of our overall general fund revenues. These are revenues that are economically sensitive and tend to go up and down with changing economic conditions. Generally, in a downturn or a recession like we saw, we would see our revenues go down pretty dramatically. Interestingly, though, in this last one, as I was just talking about, our revenues actually grow, and they're positive, except for a couple of months where we did see declines. Here are our general fund operating expenditures by service area. You can see that public safety accounts for 55% of the total general fund expenditures. Another 20% goes toward administrative services that serves the whole city, things like the city manager's office, finance and budget, human resources, the city clerk, et cetera. And then we also have these departments on the right-hand side that partially recover their costs, things like development and engineering, neighborhood and human services, and parks and recreation. So, the proposed FY22 budget does add 13 new positions across the city. 10 of these are in the general fund and three are in other funds. The deputy city managers will be speaking more specifically to some of these as they go through the operations here in a minute. I did want to point out that of the 10 new general fund positions, only two of these actually have a financial impact to the general fund, to our forecast. That's because they're either offset by revenues, they were offset by department-based budget reductions, or that we were planning for them as operating impacts of the CIP. So, that concludes my financial overview of the budget. You've all received this very lengthy budget document over the last week. That's also available to anyone online. Hopefully, it looks familiar to you. It's a very similar format to what we've seen in the past and does follow the order of the presentations tonight, and if you need more detail, we certainly can provide that to you. So, with that, I'll go ahead and turn the time over to deputy city manager Andy Granger.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen, Mayor and members of the council. Before we start with our department budget overviews, I just want to recognize our directors who are in the audience, as well as our budget staff that's in the audience, too. They played a major part in putting this FY22 budget together, and we want to give them a big thanks, but we're also going to not hesitate to ask them to come down to answer any questions that you might have that we can't answer as deputy city managers. So, with that, I will start with the administration departments. The administration departments, which begins on page 27 of your budget book, includes the city attorney's office, the municipal court, the city clerk, finance and budget, human resources, information technology, and the office of communications. These departments' individual budgets are there in parentheses for you to see, and as you can see, the finance and budget department and information technology make up more than 50% of the overall budget for these administration departments. One of the administration department's core service areas is to support the more outward-facing departments such as police, fire, public works, and water services. These departments staff a total of almost 209 full-time employees and a budget of approximately $45.2 million. 51% of that is personnel cost and 39% is contractual. The administration departments are mainly funded through the general fund and internal service charges, which are charged to other departments that are supported by the administration departments for their services. Although not nearly as visible as other departments in the city, departments covered under this section are focused on maintaining superior public service to both internal and external customers of the city. With that said, the notable budget items this year are related to regulatory requirements and technology enhancements to improve services in the municipal court, city clerk's office, and the IT department. The first request is for an associate judge position. With the increased complexities of the court system dictated by the state judicial system and increased workload, Judge Anegost has requested a new associate judge position. The funding for this position will be partially offset by the reduction in a one-half-time pro temp judge. This new position will help the judge oversee the active caseload within the city's court Next, we anticipate participating in an election this fall for two possible charter amendments and a bond authorization ballot question for parks, community facilities, and public safety. We will discuss this in more detail during the CIP, but we are running low on geo-bond authorization for parks, communities, facilities, and public safety projects. This cost for this election is estimated to be approximately $300,000. As you know or have heard on the news, there have been several network breaches recently in both federal and municipal network systems across the country that cost millions of dollars to address. Our current network security software is at its end of life and does not provide the level of security that we anticipate needing to prevent cyber attacks like these on our system. We are proposing a new advanced system called CrowdStrike that will provide more real-time, around-the-clock security for our network. As you can see, most of our budget requests for these departments are to enhance customer service through technology enhancements and regulatory requirements. That concludes the proposed budget overview for the administration departments, and we can take any questions that you may have at this time.
Andy, I would just like to mention something about IT. This year was, well, last year was just a shock to the system, to all of our systems. You know, there had been so much conversation and issues happening with ransoming systems and actually targeting municipalities for the purposes of gaining funds through their technology. We have not had any of that, but it's something that I worry about a lot, and then this year, when we all had to, you know, quickly jump into some kind of a remote function, I felt like it could put us even further at risk, and yet, we still had, we still were not hacked into, and we still remained safe. So, I just really want to thank our IT department. IT, raise your hand. There you are. Thank you very, very much for everything that you did to protect us during this unprecedented time. I mean, when everybody had to leave their offices, we all had to work or many people had to work remotely, and it still worked. You know, that's, it could have easily gone the other way. You know, there's firewalls and all kinds of issues that could cause big problems, but we didn't have big problems, so I just really want to thank you for protecting us from external hackers at the same time allowing us to be able to function just very, very quickly, right off the bat. So, thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? All right, we're ready to move on.
With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Gregory, who's going to discuss the proposed budget for leadership and management, as well as the development departments.
Thanks, Andy. Get my clicker working here. There we go. Talk a little bit about leadership and management, and this department begins on page 163 in your book, and this includes the areas of the mayor and council office, the city manager's office, governmental affairs, and real estate development. And the core services provided by the leadership and management department is really supporting and implementing the council goals by coordinating internal and external services, engaging in local, regional, and national coalition building, and advocating on behalf of the city and its citizens. These divisions include a total of 19 full-time equivalents with a budget of a little over $5 million. 78% of the total budget is in personnel costs, and 21% is contractual, which is primarily our internal service charges, membership dues, some training, and other things. The leadership and management, excuse me, the leadership and management department is funded through the city's general fund and through internal service charges, as Andy mentioned earlier. Similar to past years, some of the notable items include one-time funding to continue state and federal representation and protection of the Luke Air Force Base, as well as funding to support our pre-development and technical work to support the acquisition, development, and disposition of strategic sites throughout the city. Other notable items include funding to support professional development opportunities through internships, including ASU Marvin Andrews Fellows Program. And lastly, the budget provides some one-time funding to expand our data analytics capacities and capabilities as it relates to community sentiment and feedback and important, related to important newsworthy items that we may see. So, it allows us to add some additional users, get more people's eyes on it, and start understanding a little more about what's happening in our community. With that, if there are any further questions, I'm happy to answer that.
Any questions on leadership? Nope.
Okay. Move on to something more fun, maybe?
Leadership is fun. Come on.
All right. So, the other, the next area that I'll be going over with you is the development services areas, and this includes our planning and community development department, our development and engineering department, and our economic development services department. And the planning and community services department consists of 13 FTEs with a budget of about $1.9 million. It includes three primary functions that support all of our livability initiatives, but primarily some of our smart growth and neighborhood, healthy neighborhood initiatives. These three functions are our development review services that we provide, strategic planning, and our planning, and our historic preservation. The department also serves as advisory staff to a number of boards and commissions, including the planning and zoning commission, the historic preservation commission, and the design review board. Some key initiatives for this department in fiscal year '22 include increasing options for electronic submittals, continued review and modernization of zoning ordinances and design review guidelines, and the annexation and entitlement of various state land parcels. The development and engineering department consists of 67 FTEs with a budget of $10.5 million. The development and engineering department oversees the design and construction of public infrastructure projects throughout the city, including drainage, facilities, parks, streets, traffic control, water, and wastewater projects. The department also reviews and approves civil and building plans for all private development projects, including issuing permits and inspecting projects throughout construction. 1,277 new homes, 176 new multifamily units, 22 new commercial buildings, 80 commercial tenant improvements, and 1,331 solar permits were approved this past year, all while meeting or exceeding the targeted review times. The department relies strongly on their partnerships that they have with other agencies, including the Maricopa Department of Transportation, the Flood Control District, MAG, Arizona State Land, Arizona Department of Transportation, and other various utility companies. Some of their key initiatives this year include updating the building codes and the engineering standards manual, updating aspects of the department website, and also moving toward 100% electronic document review for engineering submittals. Lastly, the economic development services department consists of seven FTE and a budget of $1.9 million. It's responsible for implementing strategies that promote the attraction of targeted industries, business growth and expansion, a strong and diverse workforce, and support all of our small businesses and entrepreneurial enterprises. The department is focused on developing a strong economic base through business strategies that capitalize on opportunities for growth within some of our targeted industries. Likewise, we have directed some considerable resources, especially over the past year, to help support our local small business and mid-sized businesses in their efforts to maintain and expand within Peoria. This past year, EDS, Economic Development Services, has created success in generating business outcomes, including the Torota Fuels Manufacturing, locate the expansion of TYR Tactical, including the expansion of TYR Tactical and the acquisition for a future site for TYR Tactical, the Bell Bank located at Arrowhead Fountains, the creation of pop-up Peoria at Park West, and facilitating a $130 million joint IDA bond issuance for the Peoria Regional Hospital, which we're all very excited about. Additionally, the Small Business Grant Program and Business Concierge Program assisted countless businesses navigate through the COVID crisis this past year. Some key initiatives for 2022 include accelerating a California strategy for business attraction and expansion, maximizing our regional partnerships for business expansion efforts, and building strategies to complement the TSMC's expansion to Northwest Phoenix and continuing to support the Peoria's small businesses. Overall, these departments are made up by 87 full-time equivalents or employees with a budget of $14.25 million. 79% of those costs are for personnel, and 19 is for contractual items such as memberships and training, telecommunications, legal noticing and requirement, professional services, and internal service charges. The planning and community development department and the development and engineering department are funded through the general fund, and with the engineering department also with some street funds. However, revenues that are generated from user fees and capital project chargebacks offset a good portion of the general fund expenditures, whereas the economic development services department is funded through the city's half-cent sales tax fund. In order to continue and to meet current demands and performance metrics, the development and engineering department is requesting to continue with one-time funding for up to six contract employees to assist with building and engineering inspection services and project management services. These contract positions will help keep up with the existing demand, and the cost of these positions are offset by and contingent upon revenues generated by permit fees and engineering chargebacks. To support the economic development services department, business attraction and business retention efforts, we are once again asking for some one-time funding to continue sales and marketing efforts into identified markets outside the state and continue our partnership with the Small Business Development Center. All of that is happening in development services and much, much more, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those now.
Councilmember Patena?
You mentioned, Katie, the California strategy. What exactly is that, and what impact might that have on the city of Peoria?
Yeah, so the California strategy is a strategy for economic development where we are looking to determine all those companies that are looking to get out of California, why are they looking to get out of California? What is causing them to want to come to areas like Phoenix or other areas in the country? What assets do we have that we think match up with those businesses and those companies? Certainly, how do they fit into our targeted industries? And then how do we get boots on the ground that can actually, either through partnership with some of our regional partners or on our own? How can we get boots on the ground in California to create, you know, FaceTime, if you will, get warm introductions and FaceTime with some of these companies to try to encourage them to look at Peoria, to market Peoria, to show what assets we have and how we think we fit into their overall expansion plans? So that's really the background of it. How we do that and the tactics for doing that, there's many options available. One we're considering, and part of what we've included in the budget, is to have a, I call it the in-country person, right? Somebody who understands, has relationships and networks with those businesses that are in California that are looking to expand, and have the ability to get us in the door, meeting with the right people, and having an opportunity to show what Peoria has to offer, really understand what it is that they're looking for at an even more detailed level, and then make sure that we're aligned correctly and hopefully getting them here for a visit, and then allowing them to see what we have.
Okay, I do have a question, but first I want to say to people who are watching from home, I encourage you to look at this budget book. I mean, it's online, and I know it's large, it's over 700 pages, but each book, each chapter, each department talks about their purpose, their mission, and then their accomplishments over the last year, which are many and very, very impressive. And then it talks about initiatives that they're going to be working on in the following year. So it's really informative. It also talks about how COVID has affected their department for the last year. And that in itself is very interesting to see, how everybody had to repurpose a lot of things that they were doing and how they had to stop sort of in their tracks and start from a different angle. And so you will learn a lot about the city of Peoria if you read this budget book. There are also performance measures, and that's where my question is. In economic development, we've got performance measures that have to do with increasing CapEx and also awareness of our concierge program. I would like to have a third measure added to that, and that is actually jobs brought into the city of Peoria, because that's really what we're trying to do here in the economic development department, is put our residents to work. So I think that would be a good measure that we could use.
Got it.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Katie, this California person sounds great. How does that differ from Rick's job?
It actually is...
Or is it just in addition to?
It's in addition to. It's creating additional resources in a way that is in the area, that is very familiar with all of the industries and businesses that are looking to expand in California, understanding more to the detail about what it is that they're looking to, why they're looking to expand, what is it that they're looking, what are their pinch points? What are the things that they're struggling with, either in their current location? Are they looking to expand beyond the California borders? If so, you know, where are they looking? And start aligning us with those businesses that are looking to move out and move into areas, you know, you've seen a lot of, over the last, you know, number of years, probably, the last couple of years for sure, we've started to see more exodus out of California for a variety of reasons. We can address some of those, maybe not all of those, but this would be an opportunity for us to have someone who's got strong networks in the community, strong networks with these businesses, has the ability to get into the right people, the CEO-level folks, and talk to the people that are really the decision-makers. So we wouldn't spend this money if we can't find somebody who can really do that for us and do that well. Otherwise, we would look at other tactics for doing that in ways in which our staff can help facilitate and add resources to that as well.
Sounds good. Thanks.
And if no other questions, I'll let Eric get started.
All right. Talk on operations.
All right, we're on the right page. Thank you, Katie. Thank you, Katie. Good afternoon, mayor and council. As you can see, I'm going to go over some of our front-facing operations for the city of Peoria, and I'm going to cover our Parks and Recreation and Community Facilities Department, our Neighborhood and Human Services Department, Public Works, and Water Services. And just as a note, you have seen some fairly detailed presentations and study session on these previously. They were oriented towards the budget and some of the trends that we're starting to see in these departments. So I'll do my best to provide you with an overview, but we're also prepared to go as deep as you want to go into the budgets. Real quickly, I also, and the mayor mentioned it, Jeff mentioned it, our city manager mentioned it, COVID has had a huge impact on these departments, particularly Neighborhood and Human Services, Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities, but they've all been impacted. And it's the primary reason why in your budget document, and with a lot of the other departments, you see the little dip for this year. And I can tell you that the department heads, our staff, we are so ready for this to be over, and we're so ready to get back to normal. We're that close. So a little bit about what you'll hear from me tonight is we're planning on turning the pipeline back on in several different areas. So I'll share that with you. We'll be cautious, we'll be very mindful of the metrics, but we're optimistic, cautiously optimistic. And as with Mr. Granger, I'd like to thank my directors and the deputy directors that are in the audience tonight, and the men and women, all 400, I believe it's 444 of them, in all these departments that have kind of stuck with it and persevered and continued to provide really good services to our residents over the past year and into the incoming year. So we'll go to the first department I'd like to share with you. This is on page 247 of your budget document, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department. As you can see, there are almost 133 FTEs up there. It's 132.75, so I'll round it up to 133. And they provide all of our Parks and Recreation services. That's not only the maintenance of parks that you see out in the field, but also our recreational amenities. About a $30 million budget, just a hair under, so it's a very big enterprise that's driven by general fund monies. It's also driven through user fees, and on occasion, we also receive grants to help us along, and those could be for recreational programs or potential leveraging on the capital side. And that's another story that Ms. Lund will share with you, but we do see that occasionally. We have four key divisions. We have a library division, which consists of our main library in the Sunrise Mountain Library. We have a recreation and community facilities division. That's what you are most familiar with, our sports complex, Rio Vista Recreation Center, the aquatics program, and youth sports. We have another division, the Parks, Rights of Way, Trails, and Open Spaces Division, and that's made up of all of our neighborhood parks, 37 of them, three of our community parks, all of the park programs that you see, the activities, the youth sports, term-and-play adult sports. It also consists of our park ranger function, who regularly enforce park rules, but more importantly, assists patrons who are in the park and have even got into organizing volunteer events in several of our parks. It's a very, very good sign there. And we also oversee our trails, and we have over 17 miles of multi-use trails, biking and walking, and then we have 31 hiking trails peppered throughout the city. Finally, it takes kind of an excellent business administration to run the entire enterprise, and we have a 12-member team in business services that oversee these efforts. It ranges from frontline customer service to budget monitoring, to paying vendors, to issuing RFPs, to hiring temporary seasonal staff. Not only do they do that for the Parks and Recreation, Community Facilities Department, but they also assist the Neighborhood and Human Services Department. So they serve two departments, and they do a remarkable job. On the pie chart here, you'll see that 50%, almost 50% of the budget is for personnel. And just as you know, it's people-oriented. We have a tremendous level of staff that provide these services, and we are people-driven. We also spend a lot of our money, we outsource certain services. We have a lot of contracts, primarily in the way of rights-of-way maintenance and park maintenance, mowing, that type of thing. And just a real quick observation, I'd be remiss, there's a little sticker in the lower left-hand part of your screen there, and that says "Capor accredited," and that's actually a big deal. Earlier this year, you all recall that our Parks and Recreation Director, John Sefton, proudly announced that we'd been re-accredited for another five years, and that means we are best-in-show, best practice, and we went through a series of documents with our accreditors to show that we know what we're doing and we do it very well. So hats off to the department for that. Real quickly, we'll go over some of the more notable budget items, and again, everything, all the detail is in your budget book. The management of our parks, facilities is key to maintaining a dynamic and attractive parks and recreation system. As our recreational facilities age and/or new ones come online, they place demands on our ability to provide responsive and timely maintenance. We're very aware of that, and we spent some time trying to reposition our department to meet those needs. Over the past year, we had the good opportunity to work with our Public Works Department, particularly in the facilities maintenance area. Even though we are primarily outside, we do have restrooms that have plumbing, we have water fountains, we have park lighting. All of these are routine touch-ins with our facilities division in our Public Works Department. And we worked it so that they would transfer some funds to the Parks Maintenance Department voluntarily, and we would be even more responsive in our turnaround time in addressing some of the facility issues. On top of that, we've also reorganized to put a position in place to use some of that funding to be even more responsive to facilities issues that come up in our parks. And they happen. As I mentioned, they're older, they're newer, things break, and we got to fix those fairly quickly. So we think this is going to be a much more effective way of handling that. Over the past year, we saw a tremendous uptick in the number of individuals using our trail system. I think with being shut in at home and some restrictions that occurred, our parks were even further loved to death, which is a good thing, but that also causes maintenance issues. We also, this year, coming in this year, will be adding new CIP trail projects. And as mentioned earlier, we do budget for additional ONM, ongoing maintenance, and staff as appropriate to cover the workload impacts that these new trail systems will have in place. So we will be adding Paloma Trails. We have the Stadium Multi-Use Trails, we're slated to do that. And we have a new trail head at 99th and Olive that we'll be working on. All of those together add up to two new positions that you saw a little bit earlier in the presentation. So we're excited about that, and they will help support a very robust trail system. Finally, or I'm sorry, in fiscal year '22, we also anticipate completion of a new walking trail in the Suncliff Neighborhood Area, kind of 114th and Olive, landscaping along Joe Max Road from the Loop 303 to Vistancia Boulevard. We're going to plant things there, we're going to have to maintain those things. We've identified a need to maintain the completed portions of the pedestrian and shade initiative. There's a spot where we've got to address that. It's a little bit of a donut hole, so it's all good. And then we also have a roundabout at Deer Valley and 109th, and we know we need to maintain that and do a good job of doing that. The ultimate ask there is a little bit of extra money in the contract landscape maintenance. So we're going to just build that in, we're going to outsource that, and it will be a very effective way of accomplishing that. And finally, now that we've opened Paloma Community Park and it's been in operation for some time, we've noticed that we need a little extra money in our utilities budget to cover water and some wastewater fees that have crept up on us. So we are asking for funding to help support that initiative as well. That really encompasses the presentation before you on Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities. Any questions that you may have?
Councilmember Patena?
Thank you, mayor. So Eric, I have a question. If anyone who's been out to Paloma Park, they've seen that the playground... they've seen that the playground equipment there is used for people of all, can be used by people of all abilities, and that's really a great thing. As we retrofit our older parks, are we retrofitting them with adaptive equipment like they have at Paloma? And if so, do you have that money in this budget to allow for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Ten, the answer is yes and yes. There's two things. We do have a little bit of money for ADA, how do I phrase it? We do have money set aside for ADA compliance. Whenever we go and redo a park, whether it's a job order contract less than a million dollars, we will build that into the equipment. When we work with our engineering department, and it's a much larger endeavor, we also work that into the project. It's important for us to make sure that our park system is accessible to all and that we're not only following the spirit of the law, but the letter of the law, and we do that regularly. And if you ever have time, we can take you out to any number of parks and show you what we've done over the last few years to come into compliance and to make sure our parks are accessible.
Can I just add to that?
Absolutely.
Just to also, just to add to that, that, you know, as beautiful as Paloma Park is, there's a goal to try to get all of our community parks inclusive in that way, and we do have some funding in the capital program for Rio Vista Park in the upcoming year as well.
And Mayor, Councilmember Patena, one other side note, when we did the design work for Paloma Park, we incorporated, and I'm looking at Adina, we incorporated perspective from the Peoria Unified School District on how to accommodate disabled youth children and those with physical and intellectual challenges. So you're seeing more and more of that in our park system.
Yeah, it's very impressive, and I thank you very much for all the work that went into that. That's a big accomplishment, and it's something that Peoria needed to do really badly. So I'm glad that we've done it. Also, I just want to talk for a second about our trails. When everybody had to quarantine last spring, I know, and as a matter of fact, I see it in these budget notes, that the use of our parks and trails went up by 200%. 200%. I mean, that's huge. That's a lot of maintenance. It's a lot of Park Ranger work. It's just a lot of fixing up after all of those people trudge around. I know that we are considering it 50% to be an ongoing increase. And so, do you have the funds in this budget to make sure that we can accommodate that increase as well as, you know, the increase to the amount, the miles of trails that we have?
Mayor, the answer to that question is yes. As I mentioned earlier, we do have some additional trail system that we're bringing onboard, but we've also done some reorganization within the Maintenance Department that put an emphasis on trails maintenance. If there's something unique that pops up, we'll certainly circle back if we have to, but we feel adequately staffed in that particular area and in the Parks Maintenance area.
Okay, good. I'm glad to hear that. It is definitely an issue of quality of life for our residents. I know they love our trail systems, and so I just want to make sure that we can keep up with them as time goes on and make sure we're putting our money where it's most needed. I also did want to throw out a shout for our Park Rangers. I really appreciate the work that, you know, their initiatives that they took up during the course of this year. It says that they not only responded to many, many calls for service, but organized volunteer events to yield 315 volunteer hours devoted to trails, open space cleanup, and enhancements. And they also did virtual classes devoted to outdoor education. And, I mean, that's just really incredible, and please pass along my thanks to them for taking that on.
We'll be very happy to do that. That's very intentional. We have wanted them to get more and more into that fold, and it's great to see that starting to take place.
Good. I appreciate it. And the more people who learn to love our desert, the happier I am in Arizona.
Absolutely, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, super.
One second. Councilmember Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. Eric, just real quick, you're saying that this budget is sufficient to maintain what we currently have, but looking at page 262, it looks like we actually have a budget decrease of 2.2% in the Parks of the North. Is that correct?
Vice Mayor, which page again?
262.
262?
Parks North. It shows a 2.20 reduction.
I'm on the wrong page.
261, I'm sorry.
Mayor and Council, I think I can help answer that. I think we've had probably some one-time items last year that were taken out of the budget because they're one-time. So that reduces some budgets every year. And I'm kind of looking at some notes, and I think they moved a few of the dollars probably within their parks areas where they needed it most. So I think that was the main key for that reduction.
Okay, like I said, I just want to make sure that we're all aware that, you know, as Eric, you mentioned, your parks are getting used extremely more often, and just, you know, we're seeing all of the people, since the malls are closed and the movie theaters are closed, everybody's going out to the parks and trails, and I just want to make sure that we're properly funded to make sure that, you know, the repairs that need to be done in the next year or two, that we have the funding to do that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you. Yep. I was looking at the staffing positions, Vice Mayor. I apologize. I was looking at, on page 262, trails maintenance, and it shows an increase over last year.
He meant page 261.
Yep. I caught it. Yep. Thank you.
You need to read our minds.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
I've highlighted and tagged it and everything else, so. All right, very good.
Yeah, within that, I think we will follow up and make sure you can compare the two budgets and the explanation for that, because your point is well-taken. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our Neighborhood and Human Services Department. And this particular department is made up of 45.25 employees and is requesting an operating budget this year of a little over $17 million. Primarily, it's funded through general fund. We do receive a good portion of CDBG funds every year, and this year being the year of COVID, it's been unique. We've received additional CDBG funds that we put to good use.
Excuse me, Eric, would you mind for people who are...
You got it. I apologize. I apologize. Absolutely, Mayor. CDBG stands for Community Development Block Grant, and these are funds that are granted to entitlement cities that have 50,000 or more individuals for social and human service-type projects. It's broken into social services, and then you can use a portion of it for capital-related projects. So when I say CDBG, that's what I meant by that, and I apologize for the acronym. We also fund this department with the Percent for the Arts Program, and as you know, Peoria was one of the first cities in Arizona going way back when that said, hey, we really want to put some nice art, eclectic art, into our community to make sure we're known for the arts. So we set aside 1% of our capital fund or our capital projects into this pool of money, and it's accrued over years. So a portion of our arts program, the majority of it's paid for with 1% for the arts fund. And then we also receive user fees in the form of our AMPM programs, our little learner programs, and some of the other programs we do. To accomplish all of this, let me go back. The core mission of this department is to engage our residents, promote safety in healthy neighborhoods, and create a sense of community and pride. And that is the essence, community outreach and community engagement. That's the function and focus of this department. And to accomplish this, we have a Youth and Services Division. They work with the school districts. They work with the Youth Advisory Board. Their whole focus is to cultivate and ensure that our youth needs and interests are represented well, and they have a sense of connecting with the city. Our Special Events Arts and Culture Division works with neighborhoods and communities to develop community and neighborhood-centric events. That's what we call them. These are events that occur throughout Peoria that reflect the diversity of Peoria, and they are in celebration of Peoria, and they do a wonderful job of doing that. A quick note there, this year, because of COVID, it's taken a little bit of a dip. But again, we're very optimistic. We're looking at moving forward with what we've seen in the past, our park fests. We're looking forward to planning the Fourth of July event. And more importantly, we plan to go from 14 special events that occurred over the last year, and we want to push that up to 60. That's one of the little metrics that you'll see in the budget, so we're very excited about that. Another key component of this department is our Code Enforcement Division. And last year, they processed 11,522 code violations. But the best part of this is 98% of those were resolved voluntarily by the property owner in question, which means only 2% found their way to actual enforcement and even less to the municipal court. So we've got very good code officers that have great information and connect with our residents in that way to encourage them to maintain their properties and businesses. The last piece of this department, the Human Services Division, key division, they oversee all of our human services that are funded with the Community Development Block Grants. They use some of our general fund money to connect with nonprofits. And they also oversee the 18 nonprofit community care center at our community center. We have 18 different nonprofits now that provide services on a regular basis to our Peoria residents there, and that's fantastic. It's really done well. I think on this slide, real quickly, it's personnel that drives this, but we also contract out a lot. As I mentioned, we have a lot of federal funds, and that means we have a lot of contracts with nonprofit agencies to oversee many of the human services that we do. So in a nutshell, that is the Neighborhood and Human Services Department. We do have a couple of budget asks that I'll go through as quickly as I can. The first is our continuation of our homeless outreach efforts. This would include the funding of the Cash Shelter Services and our contract with Phoenix Rescue Mission for case management services out in the field. Last year, that particular organization had 500 engagements in Peoria, and that has been a great assistance to us in kind of navigating through the homeless concerns that are in our community. And they've also been very helpful to other departments because we can call these individuals and they will respond. So the word has gotten out, and they are connecting with those who may be homeless and are in need of service. The other part of this, too, you saw it a little bit earlier, was we are looking forward to bringing on a homeless services coordinator. There's a lot of activity region-wide that we need to stay in tune with and track, and this individual will be that person to do not only that, but to oversee the contracts we have and any issues that come up with homeless individuals in the city of Peoria. So we're very excited about that. You may recall earlier this year, we shared our thoughts with you on community engagement and the importance of building relationships with neighborhoods, of being proactive in our reach-out once we have those relationships, and then also ensuring that we're prepared for the reaction if something doesn't occur properly or if there's a crisis. Part of our ask this year is a continuation of enhanced community engagement, and that's the funds that we use to go out to neighborhoods and communities to connect with them, to provide them with interesting information that they need, part-time staff, the pop-up van, to have many neighborhood celebrations, all to connect different neighborhoods with what we're trying to accomplish, which is that feel of engagement and that connection. Finally, neighborhood grant funding, you're familiar with that. We're seeking additional funds. This year, we funded 10 different grant applications. We expect probably next year with the increase, or with the decrease in COVID, we're looking forward to that. And the final ask that we have is with the COVID pandemic lifting, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to plan on continuing our many special events. So that would include our SOMOS Peoria Event, Second Saturdays, the Veterans Day Event, Fourth of July, the Boards and Commissions Dinner, and also within that, certainly our arts, our performing arts and our static arts. We very much want to pursue those activities as well. That, in a nutshell, is the Neighborhood and Human Services Department. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I just want to say that, you know, we talk a lot about Peoria. Even though it's a very large city geographically and it's growing rapidly, we still feel like a small town. And I think a lot of that has to do with the Community Assistance Division, with the Neighborhood and Human Services, people who are out there trying to reach out into the community, talk to people on their street, do the pop-up Peoria, supply all of the touch that happens between the city of Peoria and the residents in Peoria. And although COVID hit last year and they weren't actually able to go out with, you know, park fests and parties and so forth, they got to work and they implemented the grant programs from the CARES funding, the federal CARES funding that we received. They were able to help get that into the hands of people who needed it, implemented Rent, Mortgage, and Utility Assistance Program from that CARES funding. And I love this one. They created and staffed the city's COVID helpline. You could just call the number and find out whatever you needed to find out, what resources were available, where should I go, when should I go, you know, what's the rules today. So I just really, truly appreciate all that they do and all that they did over this last year. It was a really, really big deal. Everybody pivoted, and they just made use of themselves in the best possible way. So thanks to everyone who participated in all of that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Public Works. As you know, we had a presentation on Public Works a little early, and we caught ourselves a little short, so I might just add a couple other really, really quick things in this one. So the Public Works Department, and this is on page 341 of your budget document, it consists of 171 employees that really are the backbone of key operational services that benefit all who live, work, and visit Peoria. Collectively, they make up five different working functions, all of which are recognized leaders locally and nationally, and we've received a lot of attention in a very positive way that I'll share with you here in a second on that point. And again, you'll see the accreditation, 597 different standards that not only Kevin Burke, our Public Works Director, went through, but also Kate Powers, our Water Services Director, went through. That's phenomenal, and they did a great job. They worked on that for quite some time and got the good news just last week. So congratulations again.
Congratulations.
So on this slide you see before you, the bulk of our expenses are contractual, 52%. And you'll note that we are heavy into street maintenance, street repair. We do a lot of right-of-way maintenance in that area, in the flood areas. So we do, on occasion, outsource there. We contract out a lot with our facilities management team to address issues in city buildings. Personnel is about 30%, but the contractual component really is the largest part. Our Solid Waste Services Division, it now serves over 61,000 residential and commercial accounts. That's a lot. In total, last year, it was a little over 66,000 tons that got tipped into our landfills. But more importantly, they also serviced 15,000 tons in recyclable goods this year, and they did so with a 19% contamination rate. And that may sound very weedish, but it's very important. It's the best in the valley, the contamination rate, and that's because of the educational outreach and the efforts of that department to connect with our patrons. The Streets and Storm Drain Division is also responsible for keeping our streets drivable via the pavement management program. They maintain and manage all of our traffic control devices once they're built, and they oversee our storm drain maintenance program. Really quickly, again, when we do street maintenance, last month, we mentioned that our PCI, our payment condition index, we take samples each year, was 77. That's on a scale of 100. The national average is 67. So they are doing an outstanding job of making sure our streets are safe and sound. And again, Council, you're doing an outstanding job of reinvesting into something that's very important in that area. We also have Fleet Services, Fleet Management, and the Transit Division. And transit has been very busy this year with respect to all of the items at Valley Metro and the regional conversation on the potential for... and this, the regional conversation on the potential for extending the sales tax on transit. So they've been a very busy group. And not only that, but they've also been maintaining all of our fixed route service, and they've been spending a lot of time getting ready for the Pogo Phase Two. Because of the many diverse functions, the operations of this department are funded through several different sources, General Fund, the City's Transportation Fund, the State of Arizona Highway User Revenue Fund, we do get some money from them, and the Sanitation Enterprise Fund, and that was mentioned earlier. So what I'd like to do, the budget's a little over $51 million in total, and I'd like to kind of roll forward and just share with you a couple of things that we'll be seeking. And again, everything is in, in the department right up here. To kind of maintain our services in a superior manner, the department overall is seeking about $2.1 million in one-time ongoing supplemental requests for the upcoming year. The key request, over the past few years, we've added about 34 new, 3,400 new residential and recycling clients in Peoria. And we do need to move forward with the purchase of a new sanitation vehicle and a driver. And that's to make sure that we balance our growth with the needs of the here and now, and the workload indicators indicate it's time to do that. So we are asking for that. And that's all built into the rate increases that Sonya Andrews, our CFO, shared with you earlier this year. The city also sees, also continues to see an increase in our landfill disposal rates and the cost of recycled materials. Because we don't have a landfill, we rely on others for space to take our refuse. And both the Glendale landfill and the Waste Management landfill have notified us that they do plan to increase the tipping fees this year. So we are asking for money to support the cost of tipping this year. And again, that's built into the rate increase. Recycling rates are also on the upswing, unfortunately. And we want to, we will continue to monitor those, but we also look forward to continuing our relationship with the city of Phoenix. We use their sorting facility to deposit our recycled goods. And we are vigilantly communicating on a regular basis, what can we do to keep the costs contained, how can we lower costs? And we are also subject, as Mr. Burks mentioned repeatedly, the commodities market. Who's buying what? Who's buying cardboard, glass, and so on? So we're watching all of that, but there is an increase in that area, and we are seeking funds in that area as well. Facilities maintenance, you'll see a city building and asset repair. It's a huge responsibility. We need, this year, we need to replace water heaters, batteries to ensure our interrupted supply of energy in case the power goes out. We still have lights and it works. It's very important. We have normal wear and tear we've got to replace, and there's a major refrigeration component that needs to be replaced at the PSAB building. So we want to make sure that our police and firefighters are all taken care of in addition to all the customers that go in there for service. Finally, or I'm sorry, on the Transit Division, I mentioned earlier that they are working diligently to re-up Pogo Phase Two this October. We're very excited about that. But as you had mentioned, Mayor, earlier, and our city manager mentioned, it was a pivot year for our Dial Right service. And just a quick note, the Transit Division really did a wonderful job of collaborating with Neighborhood and Human Services to provide some real direct service to our residents. They basically used that service to get folks, individuals that couldn't drive, to the vaccination sites at the community center. And it's just a real good demonstration of how that team cares and really taking a hard look at how we can leverage our resources in other ways. So we're very happy we were able to do that. A final note, you'll see entry signs, P-83 auto district. Yeah, we definitely want to maintain our presence when you get to Peoria, and we have to make sure that we know what our maintenance obligations are. So we are asking for funding to kind of conduct a more comprehensive assessment so we can figure out what longer-term costs might be for our entry monuments, for all the P-83 signage and the new Bell Auto District signage as well. That's an important one for us. This concludes my overview of Public Works. Do you, any, any questions on this one? There's a lot to it.
Yeah, there is absolutely a lot to it. Public Works makes the world go round. I mean, really picking up our refuge, making sure that our streets are safe, and, you know, making sure that people can still get to their doctor's appointments. All of that stuff continued on without a single break in service to any citizen in the city of Peoria. And, you know, we're just really thankful, very, very thankful, that in spite of the world not being normal last year, it was normal here for our citizens in that they could, you know, still receive all their core services. We appreciate it very, very much.
Great. All right, we'll move on to the final operating department, our Water Services Department. And I think we all know the importance of providing excellent drinking water and sound water policy to ensure continued economic development and community well-being cannot be understated. Water is the lifeblood of this part of the world, is the lifeblood of any part of the world exactly. And we have to make sure that we're on the ball at all times, not only processing in a responsible fashion what we have, but also looking down the road to make sure we have the resources in play to continue our build-out in a responsible fashion. We mentioned in February, although our water portfolio remains strong and diverse, ongoing drought conditions have caused us to continue and double down on our efforts to ensure this portfolio retains its vibrancy. And we basically want to guarantee that we're a key part of making sure that Peoria continues to be a good place to live, not only here and now, but well into the future. The goals of the department are fairly straightforward: provide reliable, high-quality water and wastewater services to all of our customers, preserve our investment in our utility infrastructure, and grow it responsibly, pursue future water resource, and continue our good environmental stewardship. And we do that all with 98 employees and a budget that's a little over $43 million. We have three treatment facilities, Greenway, Quintero, and Pyramid Peak. That's a new one that we've been investing in for years, and we're very close to turning on that water supply, so we're very excited about that. The same team also oversees the treatment of all of our wastewater, the Butler, Joe Maxx, and Beardsley plants. And they do so in a fashion to make sure it's safe for everyone, that it comes out drinking water status, and that we use it responsibly. We're allowed to use that for credits longer term, and we make sure we account for all of that as we put it back into the ground for future withdrawal. Likewise, we have a dedicated team of employees that work together to repair and fix the distribution system. You can imagine there's a lot of pipes and pumps. We've got 30 active well sites. Things need to be fixed, so we have a whole team dedicated towards that. And we also are very proud about our Environmental Services Team. We've got to test our water. We have to do it repeatedly. We have to comply with federal regulations, state regulations, county regulations, and we have our own expectations. So we have an Environmental Services Team that oversees that. And lastly, our outreach team through our Sustainability Program. That is something that we are definitely looking forward to coming back to you a little later this year to talk about our Sustainability Action Plan, but it's very important and it's a center point of the department. As you can see in the pie chart, heavy on contractual. The majority of that's the cost of water and energy. No surprise, we're a heavy, heavy user in that area, and that's what drives that. And the more important thing, this is, this is an enterprise fund. So when we discussed user fees a little earlier, this, this is solely funded with user fees in our enterprise fund, and that was reflected, again, in the information Ms. Andrews shared with you in the rate study. A couple, a couple of real quick asks here that we have in this department. And again, this doesn't include CIP, which Mitch Lund will cover. The, the cost of water is increasing again, this time by about $1.7 million, so we're seeking support of that. The rate, these rate increases are being driven by the Salt River Project for storing and recharging of water. We have an increase in Colorado water delivery fees from the Central Arizona Water Conservation District. Basically, it's going from $1.60 per acre foot to $1.92 per acre foot. And then lastly, we're getting close, as I mentioned, to turning on our operational obligations at the Pyramid Peak Water Treatment Facility. And we are going to own 44% of that. So the costs to, for O and M in that are going to go up a little later this year, so we need, need support and funding for that. We also want to ensure our, we continue our efforts for environmental stewardship, so the Nature Conservancy Fund is, is very important to us. This group basically oversees and is a major driver of the health of the Salt River and Verde watersheds, and that's the main source of water for SRP. And we are a big user of SRP water, so it makes sense to support tree regrowth, reforestation, erosion control, and so on. It helps in the long run in the quality of water. And lastly, the Sustainability Action Plan update, that's, that's an ask. We are getting close to completing all the surveying and putting everything together, synthesizing everything. And we are asking for a little bit of extra money to produce a nice report and the collateral that goes with that, so we can message that out to our community after we show you what we're proposing and where we'd like to take things. Mayor and Council, that concludes the, the ask from the Water Services Department and really all the other departments. If you have questions, I'm here for you, and we have our department heads in the, the audience tonight as well.
Questions? Comments? I just have to say thank you for all that you're doing with regards to water. You know, we've always had a diverse water portfolio, but now it is, it is getting more and more expensive, and we're having to add more infrastructure, and we're having to, you know, to build all of those pipes and things for the second half of the city. So it's very serious business, and we take it seriously. And I hope that our residents understand that we are planning for well into the future with regards to the growth in our city and how it corresponds to the water that we're using and buying. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Mayor and Council, I have the, the honor of presenting the last two departments as part of our department presentations, the Public Safety Departments comprised of the Police Department and the Fire Medical Department. As a reminder, Chief Miller and Chief Rees gave more detailed department overviews and budget overviews in February of this year as part of a study session similar to the other major departments. So this, tonight, will be a summary of each of those departments. The Police Department budget starts on page 405 of your books, and I'll start with the Police Department. The department is led by Chief Miller and is organized in three main areas: patrol services, special operation support, and management services. The department has 307 full-time employees and a budget of just under $54.5 million, which is made up of 82% personnel costs and 16% contractual costs. The Police Department is mainly funded through the General Fund, with some one-time expenses funded through asset forfeiture funds and one-time grants. The mission of the department is to maintain trust, ensure a high quality of life and safety, and preserve life and property. The focus of leadership, led by Chief Miller and his command staff, is to ensure appropriate service levels, have professional and well-trained staff with the necessary equipment to perform their jobs, and engagement of the community. In order to meet the department goals and provide superior public safety, the following items are the most notable budget additions from the Police Department. With Council's support for enhanced public safety and through the aid of a development agreement for the new Mystic Development, formerly called Lake Pleasant Heights, we are proposing to add two new police officers. These officers will be fully funded by the developer per the development agreement until they reach 750 units within that development. At such time, when they hit 750 units, the city and the developer will cost-share in those two officers until they hit 1,500 units, at which time the city will take over and be fully responsible for the funding of those officers. We anticipate this to take probably four to five years before they hit 1,500 units, based on their, the development projections. The addition of these new officers will help minimize overtime, mitigate illegal truck traffic in the north, and support other patrol operations in the north. In addition, a new public safety specialist will help augment our communications efforts to our residents alongside our PIO. Events like a recent Facebook Live interview with our chief and commanders goes a long way in maintaining our citizens' trust. This position will be responsible for organizing these types of events, as well as other media relations, internal communications, social media, and other public engagements. We're also requesting additional hours to enhance traffic enforcement to address citizen complaints, areas with high-traffic accidents, and DUI enforcement. Another program is our Predictive Policing and Crime Prevention Effort, which designs specific driving patterns for officers to follow to prevent crime in areas that our software predicts has a high probability to occur. Statistics have shown that this effort has been effective over the past year, and we'd like to continue. And lastly, we are requesting four new vehicles to support our School Resource Sergeant, Canine Sergeant, and our Criminal Investigations Unit, which is requesting two vehicles. As we discussed, all of these requests will help us ensure appropriate service levels, have professional and well-trained staff with the necessary equipment to perform their jobs, and maintain community trust. This will, all will help us continue our performance measures of low crime rates and response times. That concludes the Police Department presentation. I can take any questions that you have at this time.
I have a question. You know, the environment out in the world these days with regards to public safety is not always as friendly as it has been in the past, and the question of training seems to be an issue. I believe that our community policing is, is much different than what happens in some cities and some states, especially in the Northeast and Midwest. But nevertheless, I think it's important that we talk about training right now. So can, and I know that there's a lot of it in this budget, but can you tell me a little bit about how well our police staff are trained?
I'll call Chief Miller up to answer that in more detail.
He is on it. Here he comes, response times, really great.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So our training begins from the time that someone is hired. We have the in-service training at the academy where they go through a six-month academy. They learn all the basics of police work and how to interact with the community in all areas, whether it's homeless, whether there are mental issues, physical handicaps, et cetera. Once they get into the, into the field, then they work with a senior officer who will train them about, who will help train them along the ways of real-life situations with the public that we come in contact with. That program is overseen by a sergeant and lieutenant that make sure that all of our basic post requirements are, are achieved. After that, we do have in-service training throughout the year that provides each of our staff, including civilians, on how to work with our communities, our very diverse communities, whether it's ADA issues or anything that might, might be sensitive in nature. I'm very happy to say that we are in full compliance with everything that's required by, by the state, but more, more than that, we are, we have exceeded that training in training that officers go out and seek. And that is done because of the great support we have in our community, our mayor and council, our, our city manager. And then the other part is that we really support ourselves within the department. We ensure that we are doing things the best way we can with, with the information that we have. One of my commitments when I was hired here was to, I believe, that a well-educated, a well-informed, and a well-equipped department is the best for our community. And that is something that I have seen since I've been here. And our officers and our staff at our department are eager to, to serve, and they, they do a really good job.
That's great.
In my opinion.
Thank you very much. Counsel, are there any questions? No? Okay, well, thanks for all that you do.
Thank you so much.
We completely support you. Counselmember Hutt?
Andy, I had a follow-up question for you. And now I may have gotten some of it confused, but, and thank you, Chief, that was very interesting. Did you say four new patrol cars or two?
Four.
Four, okay, that's what I thought. Two will be for dog handlers, was that right, or one?
A canine sergeant and a school resource sergeant.
Okay. And the other two were for?
For criminal investigations.
Okay. Then I assume that those four, while they're specific, they'll work all over the city, right? They won't be assigned to north or south or?
The two, the, the first two will be assigned to sergeants in those roles, and in the canine sergeant, as well as the school resource sergeant. But the other two for criminal investigations will support the entire division.
Okay, the school resource officer, is that the one that?
Sergeant.
Sergeant, he's in charge of the other, the resource officers that are in the schools, right, then?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks.
That's all? Okay, thank you. All right, we're ready to move on?
Yes. And last, but not least, our Fire Medical Department. For those following along in the audience, the budget for the Fire Medical Department starts on page 449. The department, led by Chief Reese, is organized in the following main areas: fire operations and training, medical services, fire prevention and community involvement, and administrative support services. The department has 221 full-time employees and a budget of almost $42 million. The budget is comprised of 84% personnel costs and 13% contractual costs. The Fire Department is primarily funded through General Fund and fees collected for services rendered in fire and ambulance services. The mission of the department is to protect and care for our community and maintain community trust and respect. In order to meet this mission and provide superior public safety, the following items are the major proposed budget additions for Fire Medical. As we discussed in detail in the February Public Safety Study Session, we are excited to start implementing our fire cancer screening program. This year's one-time funding will augment funding from last year to provide firefighters with an initial oncology consultation and cancer screening services based on an oncologist's recommendations that are much earlier than coverage begins under standard healthcare. The goal is to diagnose cancer much earlier in firefighters to provide them with a much better success rate, and it will hopefully have a residual benefit of reducing the city's workers' compensation program costs. Once we have a better understanding of the required ongoing funding for this enhanced health screening program, we will provide more information to Council and propose how to move forward. Another notable budget item is the request to continue the Community Paramedicine Program for another year at a full-time rate of five days a week. As you may recall, we enhanced this program last year from a part-time program with CARES funding, that we believe that we can, should continue this program full-time for the next fiscal year. Our intent is to fund this with a portion of our American Rescue Plan funding that we're, we expect to get here in the near future for this year and for next year. And lastly, we are also requesting funding for an ongoing Administrative Assistant II position that supports the Medical Services EMS Division. This position is currently funded on a contract basis, but with the addition of the fifth ambulance, the need to have this position on a more permanent, ongoing basis is critical. We believe these requests support our mission to provide superior public safety to our residents while protecting our employees to the greatest extent possible and allowing us to meet our performance measures. That concludes our public safety presentations, and we can take any questions that you have at this time.
Councilmember?
I just have one question. What is?
It says research the need for a juvenile fire setter program. What is that?
What page is that on?
What page?
It's on page 452, under Initiatives.
Do you see it?
Yes.
Yeah, we're, it's basically researching our future need for a fire setter program, which is counseling for youth individuals that may have problems with setting fires or whatnot. We don't have a problem in Peoria right now with our youth in setting, setting fires, so it's just an initiative to look into it for the future.
Thank you very much. Chief, don't go away. Come back. I would just like to, to ask you if you could, if you could give me a, sort of a synopsis of last year. I, you know, reading through this, this budget book and looking at the notes of how COVID affected all the different departments, you know, our Fire Medical Department came into contact with a lot of people early on who had COVID, and, and so the department itself was hit pretty hard. Can you tell me a little bit about that? How is everybody? How did we do through that?
Sure, we were hit pretty hard. So we had approximately 80 to 85 of our members of the 200 firefighters that we have out in the streets that were effective positively with, with the COVID. It put a strain on us, and, and it was a challenge to keep all the trucks staffed. However, of the ones that weren't sick, and they weren't all sick at one time, fortunately, is we were able to step up to the plate and keep it staffed on overtime basis, so, but it was very challenging to keep 100% staffing.
Yeah, well, I just have to say thank you. You know, I never heard one single complaint from a firefighter ever talking about how, you know, a hardship that they were suffering by having to deal with, you know, a pandemic firsthand. So just please thank everybody for me, and I hope that they're all well now and doing okay.
Yes, everybody's doing well. I think we have one person off that recently had, was positive for, for the COVID, but that's it. At, you know, previously, we had, you know, as many as 10 or 12 people off at any given time, so knock on wood.
Still took care of everybody else. Councilmember Hunt?
Chief, thank, thank you for that, and I noticed that the increased personnel cost was offset by delaying equipment repair and maintenance and supplies. Have you been able to replenish those, or are those costs in the budget that we're looking at?
The cost is in the budget. We're looking at, at the, the additional SCBAs that have come up and, and under a CIP, and the, the PPEs for wildland is in the budget and.
I assume none, none of this caused them to be put in harm's way because of not having something?
Correct.
Okay, good. And again, thank them for what they do on a daily basis.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think that's all from us. Andy?
That concludes our department presentations. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Tindsey if we want to, or?
Yep.
Yes.
I think that's right. Mayor, to Andy's point, we have concluded the operating budget request. Might be a stopping point if you would like?
Yes, yes, I think it's, it's a perfect time, so why don't we take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back and do the capital improvement program budget? All right, thank you.
Okay, our special city council meeting is resumed. Mr. Tyne.
Great, I'll pass it over to Mr. Christensen to lead us through the next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tyne. I'm just going to give a quick overview of the development and the financing of the CIP, and then I will turn it over to Ms. Lund for the fun part of tonight's presentation, the actual capital projects. So updating the 10-year CIP is a significant undertaking that we do each year. It takes staff members from many different departments, and we start early on in the summer with project estimating and don't really wrap up until January, February, when we do our final financial balancing. The FY22 CIP, or capital budget, is $242 million. That's a 3.5% increase over last year. And our 10-year total capital program is $836 million, a 6.7% increase over last year's program. The CIP includes dozens of different funds that roll up into these kind of bigger categories that you see here. And I do want to point out that we have a, we strike a nice balance in our CIP between the use of debt and the use of pay-as-you-go funding or cash in our various operating funds. The debt part of the capital program, you can see kind of on the lower right quadrant there, it makes up about almost half of the overall CIP between GO bonds and revenue bonds. And then on the left side are pay-as-you-go sources, things like utility rate, revenues, transportation, sales tax, HERF, general fund, and quite a few others. That's also a large portion of the overall program. And then finally, we have our impact fees, which, though they play a slightly reduced role in the CIP compared to maybe 10 years ago, they still are an important part of our, of funding those growth-related projects. We want to spend a couple of minutes talking about general obligation bonds. This is our single largest funding source in the capital program. It's a very important source when it comes to things like parks, trails, open space, public safety, general government, and storm drainage. It's the primary source of funding for all of those projects. As we look at the use of GO bonds for various projects, there are a number of considerations that we have to take into account. The assessed valuation of all properties, commercial and residential in the city, combined with our secondary property tax rate of $1.15, really determines how much financial capacity we have. Fortunately, home values have been going up very quickly, as you've probably read in the news, and that has given us additional capacity over the 10-year program. We also have to look at a couple of legal requirements. We have constitutional debt limits that we have to make sure that we are within. And then finally, we have to have authorization from Peoria's voters in order to sell general obligation bonds. Diving a little deeper into voter authorization specifically, this slide shows our estimated remaining bond authorization as of the end of this fiscal year, so June 30th, 2021. Since our last bond election in 2008, we have invested heavily in a variety of amenities and infrastructure all across the community. And not surprisingly because of that, we are starting to get a little low on voter authorization in a couple of areas. The first is parks, trails, and open space. I'm showing $20.7 million remaining at the end of this fiscal year. That will be used up entirely once we construct Phase Two of Paloma Community Park in a couple of years, FY23, I believe. And then we are getting a little low also in the public safety area. So this is an issue that we are needing to address probably in the next couple of years in order to continue to invest in those parks projects and public safety projects.
Peter, can I interrupt you for a second? Those, both of those parks, trails, and public safety appear to be low numbers compared to what's in our CIP. I would like to request that you bring some, bring some information back to us at a study session so we can talk about the bond authorization in detail at another time.
Okay. Mayor Karlot, members of the city council, we will definitely look at that and come back to you within, in the next few months.
Thank you.
And with that, I will turn the time over to Ms. Lund to talk about the projects.
Thank you, Mr. Christensen. I am always happy to be here in front of you, mayor and council. While this appears to be the Adena Show, it is definitely not. There are so many people and departments that go into the capital program. It is the most fun that we have because the collaboration crosses all different departments and divisions. Our whole department works on it, but we also work with all of the other departments here in the city. So please remember that as we go through it. Also, we only have time to touch on some projects. You've seen the book and how large it is. So we just have some, a random sampling of projects to give you a good overview of what we have. So we're going to go through our usual agenda, which first, we're going to focus on our accomplishments from last year. There were surprisingly many, even though we had COVID going on. There were many precautions for COVID, which helped us to be able to deliver those projects. We're going to talk about the projects that are currently under construction in the city. We're going to talk about the projects that we are currently designing right now. And then we're going to talk about a few of the new projects that have been added to the overall 10-year CIP. And then we'd like to talk about the community works program because that's some funds that we can use throughout the year for things that maybe weren't programmed as part of the overall budget. And then we'll move on to wrap up and the next steps for the budget adoption. So as I said, we're going to start with the accomplishments. And this year was really special for all of us. Like I said, COVID made it difficult to work together, but with IT's help, we all worked together through different, various means. And because a lot of our projects are in the field, we were able to be out in the field and work through these issues. So I want to show you the things that all deserve to have a beautiful ribbon cutting in person. Many got a virtual ribbon cutting, but we're going to celebrate them right now. Maybe. The first project, Happy Valley Parkway widening from Loop 303 to Lake Pleasant Parkway. This project took one of the few crossings of the Aguafria River, and it widened the roadway from two lanes in each direction to three lanes in each direction. Also provided bicycle and pedestrian facilities in that section. This section of Happy Valley Road is used so much by the bicycle community, predominantly the Trilogy Bicycle Club, but many other club members as well. And they ride this section weekly. So we were able to provide a 12-foot multi-use path along the bridge, which we have not done before. And it's wide enough so that we can get a street sweeper behind there to pick up the debris. That's in order to help Public Works Out, who hears from these constituents whenever there is debris on the road. We were also able to add a signal to the Lake Pleasant Pavilion Shopping Center, which I call the Target Shopping Center. And that was able to make for safe turning movements in and out of that center and provide access across the way to the Lake Pleasant Town Center development. So you can come and shop, and you can stay for a while, go to many restaurants and retail establishments, and spend your tax dollars here in Peoria. And the final thing that we want to talk about is the bridge aesthetics and art. We are very particular about our bridges, and we are very particular about aesthetics in Peoria. Thanks to your guidance over the years, we know it's very important for our sense of community and arrival. So this bridge joins our other ones, having some very interesting architectural design elements and beautiful desert coloring. As you will notice, wherever we have a streetlight, we have tall columns, and those were the perfect backdrop to public art. We were able to hire an artist who worked with the elementary schools to come up with designs. She then actually worked with them pre-COVID, in case you were wondering, art's a long process. So they actually made some of the tiles for the mosaics. So we have those installed on all of the panels along the bridge. We were also able to take the center bridge columns, and we were able to do a tribute to fallen Officer Jason Judd. This was very meaningful to the city and to you as well. We were very proud to display those. Paloma Community Park, Phase One. This park, as everybody has heard in the previous presentations, is very meaningful to us. And part of the reason is because we need to deliver the same amenities across the city. So having Pioneer in Rio Vista, it made sense to provide those same amenities to our residents up north. As you can see from the photos, we have lighted fields, we have splash pads, we have inclusive playgrounds, dog parks, pickleball, fishing lake. Everybody I know has been to one of our parks to enjoy these amenities, and this is no different. You will see that there are lots of activities for children. As Council Member Patanna talked about, inclusive programming is very important. I will say that my son drags me there every week, so I have the fun of seeing children actively play and engage with each other. The pedestrian and shade initiative has been underway for a while, and it has been a collaboration amongst departments. We all know that the ideal shade situation would be to have tree-lined streets everywhere. But there are occasions where we have underground utilities, or we have minimal right-of-way, where we need to use a shade structure. So we did some demonstration projects to show what those structures could look like. Some of them are adjacent to the bus stops for enhanced seating areas. We also have them set in different respite positions, so people who are walking a long distance would be able to stop and pause and take a break from the sun. Maybe they want a drink of water, or they need to check a text message on their phone. So we have done these demonstration projects along Peoria Avenue by 67th and another section between 77th and 79th. We are going to be talking about some additional projects later in the presentation as well. We do need to try to figure out together, how long do we want somebody to pause at those locations? Should they have seating in those locations? Are we expecting them to sit and congregate and have a conversation, or are they just stopping to tie their shoe and take a drink of water? So we'll need to work through some of those issues as we go forward. Liberty Park was another park that we opened this year. This was a developer-driven park that would have been paid entirely in impact fees 10 years ago, as was mentioned previously, but needed to be subsidized with city funding as well. The park includes all of the same amenities that you would see at other neighborhood parks, which is the shaded playgrounds, shaded Ramadas, shade, shade everywhere. If you're waiting for the pickleball courts, there's also shade there. We also, at this park, put in actual lighted multi-use fields. We don't do this everywhere, but because it was next to a new development, we were able to notify the neighbors as part of their sales agreement, so they knew what they were moving next to. Very important because it's hard to add lights later to a neighborhood. My son has also taken me to this park as well, even though I'm the one driving. And because we have such a diverse section of swings to choose from, I was able to find out the swing that works for him, and we now have a small replica in our backyard. Thank you very much. Now, this picture may not look very exciting to many of you. This is the Aguafria Booster Station. This is located at Lone Mountain Parkway and Lake Pleasant Parkway. The reason this is important to us is this is the facility that takes the CIP water and takes it across the Aguafria over to the Vestancia area. Vestancia was developed initially to be on a well system, but we know in the long term, you need to have more than one source of water. So tying them into the rest of the system that the city is on is very important for our growth. So this project made that possible. It was recently completed. We finished all the testing, and we are slowly starting to send the CIP water, mixing it with the well water, to Vestancia. We have had a very intense public outreach process so that the residents know who they can call with questions, or if they have any concerns about it. Fire station number two, dorm expansion. We have talked over the years about the different services that the fire department is now offering. And with that growth, some of our older stations have had to have additions made. This is one of those additions. If you were to drive by the front of the station, you would not even know this exists. This additional building and bay are actually located behind the fire station, but it provides the resources that we need for an additional apparatus and nice dorms for those firefighters. Janet Ramsey was here last study session to talk about the pavement preservation program, and she does it a lot with maps. We decided to do it with words. And as you can see, for this fiscal year, the amount of roads that received a seal treatment is very extensive, 54 miles of roads. And another seven miles of dirt roads received chip seal treatments. The other part of the program is the pavement rehab program, and that is where we get into those projects she talked about that are in the red, where they need a more extensive treatment, and that would be the Millen overlay. We were able to do Lake Pleasant Parkway from Beardsley to 95th Avenue and Peoria from Grand to Loop 101. We also have an ADA sidewalk ramp improvement program. And when we go into the older neighborhoods, we put in ramps in those neighborhoods, even if they've never had ramps before. In other areas, we survey what is existing and see if we need to update anything to current standards. Ms. Ramsey also talked about some of the stuff that goes on over our heads. Actually, not over our heads, but over our heads. The traffic signal pole replace, the streetlight pole replacement program touches those older neighborhoods that usually are about 30 years or older, and those poles start to deteriorate. So she was able to touch many neighborhoods over the last year. The traffic signal renovations, that's addressing our traffic signals that are, tend to be older than 10 years, and they need new cabinets, they need rewiring. They have different components that need to be updated so that we can count on them to be there when we need them. So we've cut the virtual ribbon, and now we're moving on to what you might see if you're driving around our lovely city. What is all this road construction? I'm sure people call you about it because they call me about it. If you're up in Vestancia, you may see improvements on Vestancia Boulevard for a future Joe Maxx road connection. This will connect Vestancia Boulevard to the Loop 303. ADOT is currently expanding the Loop 303 from Happy Valley to Lake Pleasant Parkway with an additional lane, and they are completing the interchange that was originally started with the original construction of the 303. So as part of that, for us to connect to it, we have to have a companion project, which is this Joe Maxx project. The project just kicked off. They have been able to clear and grub the site, do the native plant recovery, and then they have started to remove some of the median for those improvements. The plan is to work closely with ADOT and have the whole project, both projects, open this winter. You're moved to the different part of the city, you might show up at Country Meadows Park, and you would say, what is going on here? We have torn up so much of Country Meadows Park to redo irrigation, electrical, and we are starting to rebuild it. So by the end of May, we will have put it all back together in a brand-new form, with new playgrounds with inclusive elements, shade structures for the playground areas, and arnasium over the basketball courts. And there's so much more that we could talk about. It's going to be an amazing park when it is finished. This is very important to us because, as you've talked about, we've had a lot of use in our parks throughout this year of COVID, and we see this continuing as people have explored them. The other park that we finished this year, Snorn Mountain Ranch, that one was also completed. I didn't include pictures, but we also did improvements there with inclusive elements and additional shade and walking paths, because once again, people have been out at those parks, walking and walking and walking. I think they're stir-crazy at home, and they need that fresh air and that exercise. Landscape enhancements. These projects have been on the books for a while, and this is the reinvestment in the right-of-way areas that we, as a city, maintain. In the older parts of the community, when a new subdivision went in, the city was required to maintain those sections between the wall and the curb. More recent years, those are maintained by the home builders, but we have a whole slew of those areas that we need to maintain. And that used to mean spraying weeds and trimming trees, but it is time for the reinvestment. So we are currently working on 91st Avenue from Mountain View to Grand, where we have redone all of the irrigation, we have salvaged all of the existing mature trees, and we are planting additional trees and landscaping to go with it. We'll finish that off with new rock, and that will be complete the end of May. The two other sections on 75th and 67th Avenue have been delayed. One of those, we have a waterline project on 75th Avenue that should be taking place this summer. And one of the utility companies, Crown Castle, is supposed to have projects in both of those sections. We're waiting for them to be out of the way so they don't tear up what we're going to invest in. We do plan on starting those in the fall, and by this time next year, they should be complete. In the CIP, we also have other roadways planned, such as Peoria, Cactus, and Thunderbird. So this investment is important. We have to take care of our assets, and we want to have that sense of arrival for anybody who's going towards their neighborhood, be it maintained by the city or an HOA. The New River Trail, we've also talked about how important trails have been to all of our residents. So this So this next section fills in some missing gaps between Pinnacle Peak and Happy Valley Road. The construction will begin this fall. We've just sent the check to ADOT, so that they can start with the bidding process. Because there is federal funds for this project, it is all administered through ADOT. So we hope to see that connection happening, and then we'll start planning the next section from Happy Valley to Joe Max, because we keep on growing. To be able to get on the trail system and go all the way into Glendale, or to go all the way across over to Scottsdale, is an amazing system to be a part of. We're jumping all over the city. Now we're back at the main library. This project has also been on the books for a while, and it is getting close to coming to fruition. Ed Strifler will actually be at the next council meeting to go over in more depth what we're going to be doing at the library. I just wanted to steal his thunder and give a quick preview. The top picture, you can see what we're envisioning for the inside, very open, very dynamic, lots of colors, very modern. We're updating the whole entire inside. We're also going to be taking care of the children's area in the back. If you've been to Sunrise Mountain, they have a very nice children's area, and it's important to have the same thing down here. Once again, balanced amenities throughout our city, very important to all of us here. We also are envisioning times that we'll be able to open it up. So the bottom picture shows if we were to have an event back there, and you were coming in from the front of the library, how it would flow and how beautiful it would be. You could see straight into that children's area. Obviously, if it's being programmed for children during the day, those gates would be closed. But you never know what could happen there. People could be getting married. All sorts of opportunities in the future.
As long as there's shade.
There will be shade. We have shade canopies, and they're beautiful and bright. So, like I said, Mr. Strifler will be here on Tuesday, and then we anticipate work to begin in June and be complete by September. We've been working very closely with the library and with John Sefton's group, and making sure that they are heard, and we have implemented everything that they can think of. It's been a very exciting ride for both sides. Pyramid Peak Water Treatment Plan Expansion. I believe we have already touched on the importance of our growth in the city and the importance of having the CAP water. This project has been on the books for two years and is finally coming to fruition in fall of this year. So this is where we expand from the 11 million gallons per day to 24 million gallons per day. And we represent that by a growth of 50,000 homes, although we expect to have industries and business users that would be using that water and not just rooftops. It's just to show that we are planning for our future, and we will be able to move that water all the way from one end of the city to the other. That's what growth is about, connecting all of our resources and being able to move it where it's needed. Inclusive Playgrounds at Rio Vista. This is our investment into our large parks. Rio Vista is the next one. It was put on hold while we've been doing work at all of the other parks. It wasn't fair to all of these users to close them all off at the same time. So with Country Meadows being completed in May, we figure it's a good time to move forward over the summer and close off the Rio Vista Playground and give it an overhaul. It will have all-new playground elements, a lot of new inclusive features. My son will be taking me there, and I'll probably have to buy something for my backyard. So I'm looking forward to it, and it will be a beautiful addition. The other two programs that we have are very similar to our right-of-way landscaping programs I talked about along 91st. These are areas where we, as a city, maintain the parks and the retention basins. And historically, it was spraying the weeds and trimming back the bushes. But we are ready to reinvest by redoing those irrigation systems, just like your backyard. You're always chasing those leaks until you replace the whole system. It's the same process. And so we have to tear it all up, put in the new irrigation, replace all those plants, put in the new DG and refresh it, so it looks like we care and it looks like we want you to come and play. It's very important to us, and it's through a systematic evaluation of where we need to go and how we're going to get through all of them. So this program is managed by parks, and they're putting together a very detailed program of how they can get through all of these and get them done. We combined the projects for this fiscal year that they're starting right now and the projects that they're planning for the upcoming fiscal year. And now we are back to the Public Works pavement preservation. Once again, we did it with words. Ms. Ramsey does it with maps. Next year, we are going to be seal coating roads all over the city, but the big investment I want to talk about is in the rehabilitation. This is the Millan Overlay projects. These are the ones that were in the red. We are increasing it by $3.3 million next year and in various other years in the 10-year program. This is to hit as many of those bad roads as possible to bring them up to speed. It's a big investment, but we're all looking forward to it. Now we move into the projects that are currently in design or are going to be in design this year. Stadium Trail Phase One. This is another investment in our multi-use trail system, and this is adding the trail on the north side of Skunk Creek, which follows from 75th Avenue to 83rd Avenue behind the sports complex, connecting many multifamily units to the businesses and retail that we have over in P-83. Important connection also with federal funding. We just sent our check over to ADOT, so that we can start the design on this project. Another one we're looking forward to, connections, very important multimodal bikes, trails, people running, people walking, who knows what the future holds and how busy it's going to be in this area, but I think we're going to see great things. The reclaimed water master plan. Once again, we're talking about moving water and connecting systems. This is the first phase of the project that we talked about recently. And even for the first phase, it's broken into four smaller phases. That's how complicated these projects can be. So the first phase along 111th Avenue from Beardsley to Rose Garden is currently under design. Will be going to construction later this summer or fall. The other three sections, we've started the design on, and they'll be coming forward in the next two years. This is to get the water from Beardsley up to Paloma Park area. I will talk in future slide about the rest of the program and how we connect the entire Paloma Community Park Phase Two. Just like when we did Rio Vista, as soon as we finish one phase, we start thinking about the next phase. It's very hard to build a community park all in one phase, because it is such a big undertaking, and because as you open it, you start to hear from the residents what else they would have liked to have seen. We did have to plan some of the amenities as part of Phase One. The additional fields is what works in that area, because remember, it's on flood control district land in a flood impoundment area. So they're only going to allow certain things in those areas. So that's why you'll see the shaded-out fields as being part of Phase Two. Also, we know that there is an abundance of need for lighted ball fields, for multipurpose fields, and for baseball fields. But the rest of the amenities are really up for discussion. So we are going to have an extensive public outreach process, and Ed Strifler is also coming Tuesday to give you more details about the process and the possibilities. 67th Avenue, Pinnacle Peak to Happy Valley. I hope I've moved you all over the city at this point. This project, we started with a neighborhood project to take care of water that's coming from Phoenix into the neighborhoods. And we made some improvements, kind of put a Band-Aid on it, until we could get the regional improvements done. So this is the regional improvements. It's three separate projects, one for regional drainage, one for widening the road to three lanes in each direction, and a waterline project that connects the system. We have just put out a solicitation for the designer, and we'll be working very hard over the next year to get the final design together, working with the City of Phoenix and the City of Glendale, and with Flood Control District and the utility companies. There will be lots of partners. CCV will be involved, all of the residents, so it's going to be an extensive project. And when we get to construction, it is going to be very sensitive, and we will have to have an amazing outreach effort. We've started that already with a website, because during COVID, we couldn't have a public meeting with hundreds of attendees, which this area seems to attract. So we put together a website, and we will be focusing on that for now, and as COVID numbers go down, we'll be able to have more actual face-to-face communications. Placemaking Initiative. Placemaking is making a comeback. As you probably remember, we started a placemaking initiative the year before COVID happened. We started out with putting on different activities. That's where the Second Saturday started. We did some improvements at Driftwood in our right-of-way. We enhanced some seating areas at P-83, public-private partnership. And then COVID happened, and gatherings and places where you could congregate together went away. So we would like to bring this back and start looking at new ideas, as we assume there's going to be some pent-up demand for people to gather and enjoy live music and hanging out. So we have put in money for this year that will be used in various locations. We'll be looking for public-private partnerships, probably in the Park West area, and what we affectionately call the Four Corners area, which is Happy Valley and Lake Pleasant Parkway, and any other ideas that you may have. We are going to be starting a cross-functional team from different departments to work through ideas and options and reaching out to you on what some of those could be that could be very successful. Fire Station Number Five Renovations is going to join its neighbor Number Two with an expansion. This is another one that, when we expand it, when you drive by on Lake Pleasant Parkway, you're not going to see the expansion. It's going to be behind the building. We are going to try to add two bays for the ambulance and the low-acuity apparatus that we need, additional dorms, restrooms, the whole nine yards. Once again, this is very important to support our firefighters and the work they do and the program that reaches so many of our residents. Olive Avenue, Loop 101 to 99th Avenue. As you may or may not know, we have a traffic signal program, and every year, we study a list of locations where we've had requests for traffic signals, and we also look at areas with high accident rates. This section happens to have both. We have had requests for a new signal at 99th Avenue, which is also called 98th Lane. It's one of those weird roads that has two different names. And we've also had some activity right west of the Loop 101 at the Olive Business Park. The left turns into that area. So we want to work on making things safer. So we've started the public outreach, but we've been able to reach out to business owners and HOAs to hear what their concerns are in the area. And we have a consultant that is also looking at the traffic data for the area. We're going to work together to come up with some ideas, and we're going to engage the public to see what they're comfortable with, what the needs are, and then we're going to proceed with projects. And it will be a variety of projects. Most likely, the signal will be one project, and then there will probably be median and other safety improvements in other areas. We might have to increase turn lanes. We're not sure what all the options are yet. We've just started it. Another project that came out of our annual study is the Olive Avenue and 85th Avenue traffic signal. This needs to have a signal today. Luckily, we had a project that came in, the Bungalows, and they contributed $250,000 towards the project, because one of their access locations is going to be to 85th Avenue south of Olive. So they're going to add traffic to the area, and they contributed. We also, if you look at the picture, and you haven't been there in a while, you may notice there used to be above-ground power lines. SRP has an aesthetics fund. APS does not, but SRP does, and it builds up over time, and we're able to underground sections of power lines. So in advance of the signal coming in, we undergrounded the power lines in this area. And the signal will be coming in in the next year.
Councilmember Hunt?
I've been asking for years for our traffic light at this intersection, as the death toll literally rises before our eyes. It's a terrible intersection. But what I've been told and what visually it looks like, well, what I was told is that it really couldn't be done because of the way the road—so where are we taking property? Who are we buying property from in order to make that go straight through?
It is still going to be not lined up perfectly. You can kind of see where the right turn lane is. The right turn lane stays there, going southbound, and so that through combined left turn lane, we'll have to move the wall that exists there right now, we'll have to move it back.
And run across the street?
Yep. That's on the church property.
That's what I figured always, and that's the easiest, because there's really nothing on the other side of it. Do we have to buy that strip of property from those owners?
We haven't started the discussions yet. We will sit down with them. I know that we have worked with the church previously, and they have always been very friendly towards us.
Well, they don't own it at all, so they're not the ones you'd be working with.
Well, that's a shame.
Well, they lease it. They rent it from a lady. I don't know her name, but—
So we try to work with all the owners and try to—usually owners that are adjacent to a project are happy to have a project like this come in, because it does benefit them. So by putting in a signal, any of the driveways that are on either side of it, they end up getting those gaps when we're stopping traffic, making it easier for them to make left turns in and out. So we'll start with having a very friendly discussion about the benefits of the project and see if they'll dedicate, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
The Fleet Shop Replacement. You had heard about the Fleet Shop at the last study session, and we have in our notes that it's 28 years old, but I heard in the presentation, it's more like 34 years old. So it is definitely aging infrastructure. We have, in recent years, as early as last year, we added an awning that you see in the top photo. So we realized some of the work that's being done outside. We added shade, because that's what we do, right? We add shade everywhere. So we put shade in. We added—we changed out all the lighting in the parking lot to LED lighting, so there's brighter lights in those winter hours when it's dark in the morning and dark at night. We also repaved the MOC parking lot, redirected all of the runoff to a retention basin that we redid. So we've tried to make improvements to get us through the next couple of years until we get to construction. The project is very important, that we do the right way. We need to engage all of the users. We need to look at the layout of the whole MOC to make sure that we have a right place to put it. We provide the right amount of space in the right location, and we really invest in the future. So we're getting ready to go out for that solicitation and work with Public Works closely to get this project done. Next, I want to touch on a few of the new projects that we added in the overall 10-year CAP. There are many, so it was actually hard to just pick a few highlights. I'm going to start with the reclaimed water master plan implementation. We talked about the first phase, but the important part of the master plan is that it really connects all over the city. So it's connecting Butler, Beardsley, and Joe Max, all of the different reclamation facilities, so we can move that water wherever we need it to be. The future of our water is unknown, but we know that we need to keep it within the city and move it to where the needs are. We also are looking at the recharge basins on Beardsley, and that's what this image is. Our friends up in the water department have a vision, and it's a fun vision. Why don't we take recharge basins and turn them into something amazing and fun, educational, walking paths? This is open to discussion of what it may be. So we will be involving the residents, and we will involve the council member for other ideas of other amenities that could go here. So this is coming in the future, and we're very excited about seeing it all come together. The Pedestrian and Shade Initiative. So like we talked about, we did our first trial project to test out how things are, how we can accomplish this. Our goal is always going to be, starting with trees as our number one. There's going to be locations where we need man-made shade as well. We have picked three different locations where we have high pedestrian activity to look at, one being 83rd and Thunderbird, where we have a lot of pedestrian activity and we do not have a lot of opportunities for actual tree shade. But we're going to look at that and see what we can fit in with man-made shade. We're also looking along the New River Trail, because that is such an active space, and looking at those places where the arterial roads and the trail come together, because not in every location can we have a trailhead, but there are going to be users that are coming from the sidewalk to the trail, and they might need to stop to tie their shoes, to send a text message saying, I'm getting on the trail, I'll see you in an hour. So we want to try to enhance those nodes. And like I said, trying to figure out—we show a bench. How long does somebody sit and stay at that node? Is it just a short stop before changing directions? And we're also looking at the P-83 area. We know it's already a high pedestrian area, and as we have more economic development projects come in, it's going to be more so. We push that out in the outer years, because we want to work with the new developers that are coming in in P-83 to make sure we have the same shared vision of what it should look like. We don't want to take— We don't want to take some theme that we've decided for the P-83 area without having all those players together. And now I brought you back to the municipal complex, I'm taking you all over the city yet again. This is of course a view of the front of City Hall and it is a beautiful view. And the question we get asked time and time again is what happened to the water fountain? Well, the fountain is a chiller. The chiller is not used anymore and it is not safe to run the water. So at this point, we need to remove what is left of that facility and we need to put in a proper fountain. We need to make City Hall a welcoming place. It's placemaking all over again, right in front of our very own building. So we have this slated for design for this fiscal year and construction the following year. With that project, we have a companion project that looks at the rest of the complex. Once we dress up this area, how do we get people between this to the backside of the library over to Centennial Plaza? How do those all fit together and flow to a beautiful space that isn't a bunch of rectangles and hardscape? So we're going to be working on those projects to really change the look and the feel of the campus, to make it very pedestrian-friendly with lots of shade nodes for outdoor storytime and places that we can gather. I also wanted to talk about the LED streetlight conversion for the residential neighborhoods. So we talked about the areas where we have to replace the poles, but there's another thing going on and that is the high-pressure sodium bulbs, the yellowish kind of bulbs are being phased out. As those are burning out, we've been changing them with LED, the bright white lights. We feel the best way to do this is neighborhood by neighborhood. So we have slated three different years to start those chains up, changing out of those areas. So we will work from south to north and we will systematically, and I say we, but it's Public Works. We will change out the neighborhoods as we go so it won't be, why is there three white lights and two yellow lights? It will all be done at one time. So that is the plan with your support. I think there was a study session about it and this is what the conclusion was. And then I want to talk about the Community Works Program. I love this program because it is things that we can do to hit different areas of the city, all over the city, and they're very meaningful to the neighborhood itself. We have lots of different programs that fall under this, signing and striping, roadway modifications, entry monuments, wayfinding signage, you'll see all sorts of things in this program. I did want to talk about the Speed Hump Program, which used to be a petition process. COVID happened and we paused all the petition processes because this was somebody going to their neighbors door-to-door trying to collect signatures. Wasn't really a good idea. We thought it would be a short pause like the rest of COVID and we're still in it. So we did a new program that's an online petition process and we've tested it out and we're getting about the same response rate as we were getting from the in-person ones. So we are going to continue it. When COVID passes, or whatever the new normal is, we will be able to do the online process, but then we'll also have a neighborhood representative that will be able to go door-to-door to talk to their neighbors. Right now, we follow up with doorhangers and postcards to try to nag people if they haven't responded one way or another. One of our recent projects that we completed was Butler Drive west of 111th Avenue. This used to be a section of road that was future roadway improvement and it sat there for years as just a section of asphalt that nobody drove on, it didn't go anywhere. It's access for one of our facilities, but people would drive to the end and they would dump their trash and that is not what we want people to be doing. So we took the opportunity to connect some trails in the area, take out the asphalt, put in the driveway we needed and to landscape the area to try to make it more of an amenity than just a place to dump your trash. And so far, we think it has been very successful. And this is also the place that Erica talked previously, where they're going to be extending the trails up at the end of this dead end. They're redoing the trails in the area and they're also redoing the basins. So kind of piecemealing together three different projects in the same area to really make a change for the good of the neighborhood. So next year, we have a whole slew of different things that we can use the money for, but we have some specific buckets that we put it in. One of the new buckets is the end-of-the-road terminations. This is somewhat similar to what we did in Councilmember Dunn's area. This is looking more at those areas where we have the off-road vehicles and they are going where road's dead end and people are accessing the desert. We're going to try to come up with some methods to try to stop people from coming through. We've tried barriers, we've tried boulders, we've tried signage and whatever we do, they outsmart us. So we're going to come up with some new ideas and things that we can do. Besides that, we always prefer to do education and we will continue to do that, but there's times you need a structural measure as well. The wayfinding signage, we have a picture of the mile markers along the trail, that and the signs along the trail heads in the trails, really a great program that Parks and Rec has done, helps with public safety, people can locate if something happens to you on the trail, you know how many miles you've been running if you're training for a race, a really nice amenity. We also have a lot of requests for traffic-related items. So on the bottom picture, you'll see the always stop sign with the yellow and orange barrel. We tested that in Councilmember Hunt's area, we had stop signs that kept getting run. For some reason, people would just fly through, four-way intersection, they kept ignoring it. So we put those out, we've had some good response that they're more visible and easy to see. So we're always trying to find new ways to let people know, hey, follow the directions like everybody else. So we have those also available. Green bike lanes, we continue to put those in wherever we can. We will be coming back out to Peoria and to the rest of Lake Pleasant and filling those in with this program. And we've tested many materials and keep working with Public Works on finding the right solution for what is easy to maintain and highly visible. So we also have the wall painting, which we had increased the amount last year, we're continuing that. We have a lot of requests for the wall painting along the collectors and arterials. It makes a big difference and we do see a lot of the neighbors then paint their own interior walls after we've been out. So it's good to see their reinvestment after our investment. So that is all that I brought for you today. I hope it was a good cross-section of things. Do you have any questions before I pass it back to Mr. Tyne?
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the capital improvement program? It is so extensive and I know that you only named a few of the, what, 250 pages of CIP programs, capital improvement programs that we have listed in this budget. I cannot thank you enough for all of these projects, for all of these projects that have happened and that are going to happen. You are pretty much a miracle worker when it comes to getting funds from the federal government, the state government and other entities to have them all help us as we prepare our city for the future. So thank you very much for that, I appreciate it. But I think most of all, what I am happy about is that you take every single project and you look at it in terms of how each individual person is going to be affected by it. So it's, you know, they could have a wedding at the library, they could have outdoor storytime, you know, people can stop at a stop sign now. Those are the things that matter in our city. We're not doing it because we are a large organization or an entity that, you know, creates roads and stop signs. We do it because we have residents who are going to benefit from it and live with it. And so I can't tell you enough how great it is to know that you are thinking of it from their point of view. Thank you for all that you do. And it's pretty amazing that you, you know, do these presentations without any notes in front of you. We are all very impressed by that every year.
Thank you.
So thank you very, very much. And with that, I think we are turning it back to Mr. Tyne now.
Thank you, Ms. Lund, I appreciate that. Yeah, I think just in summary of what you've seen tonight exactly is right. This is an ambitious but important capital plan and you saw an operating plan as well that really tries to touch on what most will impact our residents and businesses that are here. These spending plans are important, but one other thing that we don't talk about as much in this meeting is that that works within a means. This is all done in anticipation of keeping the same property tax rates for the foreseeable future. The 10-year capital plan is balanced with an assumption of relatively similar development impact fee rates, the incremental utility rates and a stable set property tax rate. Working within our means is something that we've heard loud and clear is important to you all. So while we do see that there would be a potential need for voter authorization in some of the categories, this is done in a way and timed out in a way so that there is no impact above what we see now. And I think that's an important statement that we want to bring out as we look at the spending plans that we had tonight. Couple pieces of homework that you did give us, we will of course follow up on some items, looking at our performance measures where they were brought out by councilmembers both tonight, as well as some advanced comments that we had, including economic development, some good suggestions that were brought out there. We'll confirm the resources that we have in the North Peoria Parks operating budgets and make sure that we are absolutely staffed to the right level, so we'll ensure that we can provide that to you. And any other items that we hear from you, we will of course follow up quickly. So after numerous budget study sessions and with tonight's review, that completes the scheduled work sessions on Fiscal Year's 22 budget. If the council is comfortable, we would undertake the formal adoption process, which you can see in front of you. To put a budget in place by July 1st, we anticipate the following. This would coordinate with the scheduled formal budget, or formal council meetings that you have right now and that includes an adoption of the capital plan as well as the tentative budget on May 4th. To be clear, the tentative budget establishes the maximum appropriation that would be allowed. You would not be able to exceed that in the future, so it is an important step. There could be other amendments that could later on in the final budget adoption. We also anticipate that the utility rate adoptions would be formalized at that point too. Lastly, you can see June 1st would be the formal property tax adoption and again, no changes recommended at this point in time. With that, I would be remiss without thanking the budget staff for their amazing work in compiling all of this, coordinating with all of the department heads and actually managing their executive management so effectively. So I wanted to thank them. Thank you, Peter, for spearheading this process and being a perfect emcee and leading us through. And I wanted to make special comment to two different folks. Of course, Sonya Andrews in the front, our chief financial officer, who has quietly led this group in such great stewardship as she's done that, but this will be her last City of Peoria budget session. She is of course learned from the best. No, that said, we are so honored and excited for your next opportunity. And Barry Haug as well, and this is likely his final budget process after 25 years here at the city. I don't think I can state strong enough the impact he has had in helping to address the council's interest over the years in working magic on the scenes and in working within the revenues that we have while accommodating the critical needs. I just want to thank him for all of his work tonight. With that, that's all of the prepared comments we have as a staff, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And I do have one more thing. Councilmember Mike Finn was not able to be with us tonight and while he was dismayed about that, he did send a lot of questions in advance that were already answered by staff, but he did ask me to read this statement. "Once again, this budget is extremely well-done. In my experience of budgeting and forecasting, I feel like this one had to have been the most difficult to put together. When something like COVID happens, your previous year's baseline is skewed significantly and you are almost forced to start from scratch. I personally feel that staff has done incredible work through all of this and continues to deliver their A-game each and every day. This budget is another example of their A-game. Please pass along my thanks." And that is from Councilmember Finn. And I think that we all echo those sentiments, our thanks. And with that, we are adjourned.